Father in heaven, we thank you right now for this opportunity. We bless you right now through your citizens and your mercy. And we thank you, Lord, for the blessing you've brought to us today. We love you and we condemn you. Father, right now we ask you to protect us as we go from one good degree to the protect all that's standing in harm's way, that we might have this freedom and content. Then we ask you right now, Father, to protect us from all hurt, harm, and danger that my captain to us or could happen to us. You know, right now he's a protector, he's a provider, and right now most of all you, honorable business. We ask you with him that we can do what's right for the citizens of this community and our neighbors. And we bless you now. We're gonna continue to ask you for the blessings that we go forth. Yes, we ask and bless you now. In the name, I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on its own nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everyone that's been here today. Okay, this is a great day. Number three, the board to receive place of the county's presentation. Come with me. Good morning.
One.
I am pleased to present to the board and the public the significant achievements our departments have made in the pursuit of the mission of the Taylor County Boy and Child Commission. This mission in part is to set the direction for county government and to plan for the future challenges that will save our community. Our staff will be presenting our duties, our successes during the last year and our visions for the year to come. We'll start with the county administration department, businesses, and myself, and Martha Durkens, who is our assistant county administrator. Before you is our updated organizational chart, and you'll see that represented on the chart are the voters of Taylor County, our constitutional officers, the Board of County Commissioners, and our county attorney, and our staff. And you'll notice that the dotted line to a coordination line between the elected officials and the county administrator and the county attorney. And this is just to demonstrate how we all work together. The duties and responsibilities of the county administrator are defined under Board of State statute 125.74. This includes administration of all departments. We administer and carry out directives and policies of the Board of County Commissioners and, of course, all orders, resolutions, ordinances, and regulations of the Board to assure that they are faithfully executed. We also prepare and submit to the Board of County Commissioners for its consideration of the cost and an annual budget, a capital budget, and a capital program. The duties and responsibilities of the assistant county administrator include to supervise the director for purchasing and veteran services department, organize and maintain all contracts, prepare suggested agendas for the Board of County Commissioners meetings, maintain the county code of ordinance materials, assist with budget preparation, and review submitted budgets for accuracy, completeness, and compliance of form. This last budget session, we implemented a new process to minimize corrections of our budgets once they reach the finance department, which is helpful to all of us. And the process that we implemented is that the budgets are reviewed by the assistant county administrator and our personnel manager to ensure that we have the correct pay, the correct rates, our correct costs, because those are some of our biggest costs. And it was very helpful, this last budget session, because it made things more important for all of us. She also initiates and composes reports and provides oversight as directed. Our accomplishments this last year was that we prepared and submitted a balanced budget, and I would like to say that that budget included a capital plan and strong reserves. We completed the county asset survey to address underinsured properties. We had multiple buildings that had no coverage or were locally underinsured, which tend to be an issue, you know, if we have storms, a hurricane, anything like that, which obviously we've had that for the past several years. We revised the purchasing levels of authority policy, updated sunset dates on county policies. We revised the employee safety committee, developed Ad-Loren package extension annual report and annual Ad-Loren package extension compliance questionnaire. Negotiated the preferential vehicles with solid waste and public work. We implemented the self-homemetic process and coordinated self-homemetic purchasing operations, purchased road crossings in hopes for rewatering needs, reused and realigned staff to maximize efficiency. And the mid-to-upper level management we hired was a personnel manager, assistant county administrator, purchasing agent, library manager, part-time grant holder, and veteran service officer. We had a total of thirty-three meetings and workshops that were completed. And our goals for the next year are to complete a five-year capital improvement plan and present to the board for approval, and we expect that to be on the December agenda. Project oversight for rechlorid projects and derail grants, improve the map for project with format, add a new inmate work squad to address county-wide maintenance needs, and annual policy review for all departments. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I guess that would be neat. Keep going to the next slide. Y'all owe me to go into that. My department, all of us have had to overlap into various areas, building, planning, open enforcement, all of those, which means that we all have to be familiar with our concrete plan so that we can relay to people the impact to them based on land use type, designs that they allow uses, the ZET Act, so on and so forth. We just came about due to the Growth Management Act of nineteen eighty-five and primarily designed to combat urban sprawl, which we haven't really experienced here at the local towns. But along with this came a lot of issues that we have run into through the years. We're presently under our latest evaluation and appraisal, we're reporting based amendments that you may recall, that should be coming back for the board in December for final audit, and we've had no comments that were negative on that. Uh, you can go to the next slide. These are some of the objectives and policies that we tried to end the cost plan, and like I said, a lot of information for me to ask my folks to be familiar with, but I don't really have a choice. And these break down the various land uses as well as the allowed residential density. The planning areas were brought up by the vision plan, and then we had some of those land uses placed on the map through the Foley based amendments, uh, and Foley Timberland Land Department had it. This, uh, there's a list of those uses, now there's mine for large-scale development where we come in, it has to be planned as a whole community. And the only way we could achieve these land uses was by Foley at the time removing all available residential densities on vast portions of agricultural land, because the state would not allow us to project growth beyond what we could prove. So they had to remove all of their land use for any residential density into smaller areas in order to achieve a power population issue. And that's just part of the struggles that you're running through dealing with the state and that's the thing. Then we have the, what was known as Pruitt property, and this is like a pledge to go to residential commercial take around a golf course. It was originally intended to be centered by a marina, but at that time permitting of marinas became something that is not conceivable, but it was a chance course. And both this and the planning areas resulted in many, many of the law has thrown out meetings that we stayed quite faithful to. But we did eventually get them. The land development code actually implements the conference plan, and all of my people have to be familiar with it. It's not uncommon for someone to call our office and just want to know what can we do with the city property. In order to do that, my people have to tell them what size is necessary, what is the allowed density, can it be divided, is it an flood zone, so is elevation required and to what level? Is it access by highway or anything? They have to know many, many things. They work very diligently at compounding that. The land development code right now does not contain the planning areas. We just have not adopted it to reflect that, and I think that the county doesn't have a planner, so I can only do that sort of thing in time lapse. I also asked the secretary for the planning board and brought this road code and all that sort of thing along with it. And these are some of the things that are contained within the land development code. And those are the things my people have to be familiar with. I asked a great deal of them. Variance is something that needs to go to the planning board, and it requires other hearings and notices and film and so forth, so it can be pretty involved. The planning board is adopted pursuant to land development, because seven-member board, when they have seven members, and they approve the development application, variances or disapproved depending on the case. They are due to preliminary flat reviews for sub-vigions, and many of, many of the things that do require public hearing. The technical committee consists of internal staff. We have been active in the past year as people have come and gone. You know, you're supposed to have both the planning technician and the building official officers, they're the same person, so we just kind of do that in and out now as best This is just an overview of what it takes to process conference plan amendments, require public hearings for both the planning board and county commissioners. We are assisted greatly in this sort of thing by the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council, they do great work for us, and they do it at a cost much less than it would be for us to have a planner on that, even though they can't provide a as proactive a service as they have planners do. In the low-growth state that we're in, I'm not sure if some people wanted to have that at this time. This gives you an idea of what land uses and how much of them exist in the county. And as you can see, our conservation area constitutes the majority of our coastline. The mixed-use urban area constitutes very little, and the mixed-use urban areas are those which allow high intensity of residential and commercial development. When the plan was originally adopted and a future land use map, the county was told you have X number of residence, X number of dwelling units, and you can only put land uses on the map to equal that or what you can show you will grow during the next five years. And that's why a lot of this ended up the way it is, where you may look and think this could be a different land use, well, it just wasn't a possibility, so their hands were tied, I would say, and their regulations and that. Code enforcement, we now have Joe Brown on board, and I'm very happy with the work he's providing. Basically, he's trapped junk free abandoned property. He's also moved into ZET Acts and other issues, he's been a great asset. He has closed forty-four of fifteen active, five with daily findings, one of which is at EZLE, if anyone's wondering. And, yeah, go back to that. And he has called almost every day when he comes in, and many of these pages end up having to go to a special magistrate, which is hired by the board. We don't have one at this time due to a recent resignation, but we're looking for one now. And that is who was putting in place fines for violations or whatever judgment they deemed appropriate. So Joe is expected to and does present testimony and evidence, and, you know, there's a lot that goes along with going for it. It's not a simple task, it's not without evidence. Is there any questions, code enforcement?
I have a question. Recently, I've had three or four people on here who asked me about suddenly their property is being in the flood zone, whereas they said it never had been before. So can you help me understand that?
Yeah, I can. You know, every, uh, the flood maps are updated, and that's required through FEMA periodically. It's been on like ten-year increments. The last update had a deep impact in Steen Hatchies. A lot of other areas weren't impacted that heavily, but we, in Steen Hatchies, a large number of people went from nothing in the flood zone to being in a flood zone. Many went from being at a certain elevation in that flood zone to two feet higher than they used to be, meaning that, you know, they constructed due to codes that found out their two feet below base flood. Well, it's unfortunate, we don't really have a choice in the matter, unless you can present scientific evidence that negates their findings, you have to accept their findings. And they use a combination of ground truth and vital or normal surveying and aerial imagery and so on to determine this stuff. I'm not gonna say the map's a lie, but I would say if necessary, and it's the only way for us to move forward.
And who were they that you're talking about?
People.
So do they actually, how do they go about doing that? What's the topic? Do they just go look at the records or?
No, they, uh, every ten years or so, and this is going on all around the country, they, our third-party folks, to do the studies, and they do that in the various areas. And they do have, you know, there was no case to the public, we actually send letters to every property owner who will see a change in their property. We send out twenty-five hundred or more letters. Many, I think, just end up in traffic angles that make them try reading, and it doesn't mean anything until your insurance company calls and says, oh, by the way, your cost is going up. Now, I will say-
You're looking to call them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I will say that there are provisions for grandpa life, wherein if you are in an area that was not in flood zone and now you are, if you show that you weren't out now, or you get a severely reduced rate. So there are some ways to make up for some of that. And but Steen Hatchies by far was the hardest hit area for that.
Those are big contact, yeah, that they, if they, um-
They would want to begin with their insurance agent, because that's who we provided. If we have a form set up where we show before and after, and they have been successful with that on more than numerous occasions in having a reduced rate given to their client there. So they would want to discuss it with their insurance providers, and they can, they can tell them, because they've all gone through it by now, with grandpa life. Oftentimes what happens is it triggers the lenders to go back over their client list, and you may have people that were in flood zone all along, and nobody picked up on it from the insurance standpoint. And now they have an example lender, if you are in a flood zone area, you, based on the map, they are bound by federal laws requiring you have blood insurance. They can't lend you money without, and that's lost, but it all comes wrapped in a circle.
Yeah, that's where the deal is, because the people that have talked to me, say, you know, this is new to us, which I had this before, we've never had more, it's, you know-
Yeah, I know, well, never have, there's people, and I can't tell you the number of people that have to out-speak property in the county, that's, I've met hundreds of them, but, but it's, you know, there's really nothing we can do with it. And a lot of times, and we found, uh, both in the last page and this one, is that it triggers them to go back to check all their people, and some of them that were in flood zone and nobody realized it still are, and now they're going to get the rate, and we can't help them, so you can't do the before and after. The ones that do, and it happened to my coworker, um, Clara, who worked with me, he went from non-flood to flood, and based on the grandpa provision, was able to receive a warranty for these rates. So he explains very well, since he's been there and done that.
I'll have people call him then, you know.
Absolutely.
There's a question.
I was just gonna say that in Mr. Ryan's department, we left the DIF information of the previous flood and flood zone, so that it makes it very easy to have them to come to the counter and say what it looked like before, what it looks like today back to February, and that empowers them to be able to kind of have the information to the customer insurance agent and say, well, this is how it was.
Yeah, then we provided that to us in labor for looking at the case before and case after, it's all on automated sheets, it doesn't take forever to time, and that's been a huge help.
I don't want to do this Steen Hatchies, but it's a bad thing to do.
Steen Hatchies, the city, I can't speak to all the flood plan administration for the city, I don't know everyone doing the same, you know? But they, they were impacted by the same map changes that happened throughout the county.
Yeah, I'm in the flood plan here at times.
Right.
So I have to be a check.
I'm in, I'm in.
I'm talking to him.
Well, because he can't help you, but, uh-
Yeah.
Doesn't have to share a problem with experience, but it's all of this is something that citizens need to feel for. Fortunately, my house, you know, I'm not paying to pay for.
Right.
Business park application that I am, I have set up over there, but I've got a line of credit, don't owe a dime on it.
Right.
I got a letter from the bank, that was, you're in a flooded zone area, you're gonna have flood insurance on your house, which is sitting by dry. Part of the property is wetting, other part, where the house is, you know, it's actually dry.
Right.
I bet. So I went to my insurance agent, and he said, I'm gonna get a form for you that shows and demonstrates that the fact that you're not in the flood plan changed.
Yep.
Took that down, got the two, so I'll draw.
Yeah, and anyone that calls you with a letter, it's like, have them contact us, which is impossible, because we've done that many times for people too, and so they're not looking at coastal maps like we have access to. So you may have flood zone on your property that does not touch your home.
Right.
And that gets lost in the mix, and we have provided maps to many places, you can say, look, here's flood zone, here's my house, I'm not in the flood zone, and they have success with it. And that's what we do daily, all of us, so kind of feel free to, tell anyone to lean on us as a resource for that information.
For the global one, the resource chain?
No, I, I think they would say it's just better methodology in determining that. I think maybe they just need more people in the flood zone to cover the classes off on that.
Well, you know what I'm saying, and it's like, probably not on that.
Because some of these, I mean, we've had flood maps since nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah.
And now all of a sudden, you're at the Steen Hatchies flood zone, so that's not highly improved methodology.
Well, some of the original flood maps, I believe, the eighties, were all generated based on the previous quad map, where it was five-foot interval contours. Since that time, with the onset of a lot of vital information, you're able to have down to, you know, one-foot contour intervals, which makes the modeling effort much more detailed, which gives, that's what I'm saying, some science can be, um, much more accurate results, because that, that's a lot of how they've improved over the time. I forgot what I was gonna say. Oh, the notifications that we sent out, and Danny referred them, there was literally over two thousand, and the way we generated that list of letters was if there was, mm, negative change. We didn't have the time or the battery, we couldn't see it affect a home, but if it was a little corner on the side of your property that was getting larger out, we still had to send a letter, and then it was up to you to come in and say, does it really affect me, or is it just, um, a maintenance, a maintenance requirement?
Any further questions?
Yes, there's a, the rest of the, well, probably recently, I don't know if they have a, ten years.
They wouldn't understand what's this. I mean, we, we don't use attorney language, you know, and, but, you know, the subject matter can be a little difficult to follow, if you don't, you know, see flood zone, what does that mean, and what does it turn, so, uh, but there are, you know, there definitely are contact information stuff on there. Like I say, if you contact us, anyone who has a question or doesn't understand it.
Anybody will question, who do they contact? How do we contact?
Well, if there are any unincorporated areas, they would contact building and planning department. We are the, as we're going to speak later, we are also the operator for the building, so if you could see or ask them to my office, and we will give you the information you need. I mean, we send all the helping people, some of them may not see it that way, but that's what we do, and we're happy to do it, so, I mean, and even in the city, we will look up the flood zone and say, this is what our map shows, and this is where it sits. We don't mind. I think it's gonna be helpful. Well, okay, this gives you an overview of how we run since twenty-twelve with our single family dwelling permit. Now, you want to understand that up to two thousand and eight, it was normal for us to permit more than sixty homes a year. So we're still, we're not quite half of what we used to be, and as you can see from the graph, if you do an average, we're, we're running a needle on this, is where we are now. I don't know if it's just economy or changes in the workforce or the availability of jobs here through BUCI or what have you that has had impact, but there have been notable changes there. We also acted the building official and inspection agency families there for the city in return for the permit fees there, and I don't have their data, because I don't know, David, do you know if they're running half or?
I haven't seen what you're saying.
Oh, I would assume that they already do the rate too, from what I heard.
Does this include motorhomes?
No, it does not. Motorhomes are separated out, they shouldn't be on the next one. Yeah, and as you can see there, although they permit that somewhat higher previously, at one time we were permitting two hundred flood motorhomes in a year. There was a correction in that in this, in this required to be a reset, so I didn't think they would be hit as hard as they are, but, yeah, they're, the fifty number that you see is the lowest we've ever seen for motorhomes, although the motorhomes we're seeing have a much higher cost. We're seeing motorhomes in the hundred and twenty thousand dollar range, so I think they just, they're no longer what you'd consider affordable, and it's just left the market holding them at that level. And that's due to numerous things. Every time you change the construction standards in them, you can set up, you have enough to provide bell and ice anchors, or some in Bruce Stratten. The latest addition was a requirement for a compacted dirt pad under the homes that is plugged to the specific plug, due to a lot of damages that occurred due to water getting under homes, so it's been reinforced, but it's also another two or three thousand dollars, and it just hasn't gone. Those things add up, and eventually you're no longer, you know, they just give up, so. Uh, now, record a little bit, what you can see, they increase steadily, and any single number may not stand out, but as you total them up and see them accumulate in areas, it does take on a different view. We fully understand that, but there are standards of options that govern their execution. We permit them at last when, when they meet those conditions. As you can see, we operate on, no department is overstaffed, I'll say, and we have folks like my coworker, Eddie Clara, I was thinking about, is also our overacting force person, so he has to spend his time, sometimes he's out on the weekends, so- So, uh, and my John Perkins, my inspector, is in the field almost constantly doing that. So keeping the calendar round and asking everybody to know the answer to every question may seem like a big task, but my folks pull it off pretty good. Um, the thing I want to point out with maintenance is just, for people to understand when you need something done. See, when I started here over twenty years ago, I had one maintenance person. And over twenty years later, I still have one maintenance person. I don't think we're to a point where we need another one. But if you think back on all of this, uh, new areas that have occurred since I started here, when I started, there was no four complex. There was no satellite supervisor office, there were, uh, overhang restrooms, and that year it was huge. If ever one of these things has facilities that tear up and someone's gotta go fix it, and when they're doing that, they can't be fixing it for someone else. Um, we, well, they have been leaning more heavily on outside structural support for, you know, air conditioning, that sort of thing. When it reaches a point where a second full-time person becomes feasible, I would recommend you do it, but that would be out there. Yes, I just ask everyone to understand it on my research out there, uh, right when you ask you. And that just gives you an idea of what kind of calls, of course, according to, you're gonna generate more than any other. Uh, you can see the fourth complex, like I say, that, that thirty-nine homes are not having to take place when I started. So it does have an impact, and I just ask those to realize that. This is kind of a list of our duties because it covers such a vast area. Like I say, we're the operator, so we spend a lot of time telling people the whole number of the clerk's office or do whatever department acts have gotten breached. Because there is a large segment of the public that seems will not use an automated antenna, no matter how we lay down it is. They're gonna be an operator no matter what. And so it just gives you an idea of how much cross-training mass can make people to do. Now, and, and that is a great deal. There is a, between the conflict, the land development, the car meeting, the flood zone, you're asking folks to be able and be converted in a great deal of knowledge and you cannot give along that for free. It's, uh, I appreciate what they do.
Do you have a number of calls on this office society building?
Yes.
I can see it on the list.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's buildings that I guess didn't get put on there, but yes, we do. And, and of course, there, that turns into a, a number of calls through the years. I didn't ask, is there any further questions of these things that we've identified here?
I've noticed, um, you know, before this break of session, I was reviewing a lot of subdivision classes and so forth.
There's been one since, and it's never come to fruition, you know, I don't, I don't know if it's been brought to the waist out, have you heard any? Yeah, and I think part of that is because when the party values reach such a high level, people were putting subdivisions in as fast as you could go. And we ended up with a whole lot of empty subdivision that needed anymore since then. So that may be part of it. But the, the planning as a whole, there was a time when we had planning board meetings every month. And there were developments happening, subdivisions, variances, it would be six or more every month. Now, uh, we, uh, average meeting once every three or four months, and there'd be one out on the agenda. So from a planning and development standpoint, the impact for, kind of question.
Would you think that at some time we're going to, um, start up with one subdivision? Is there any evidence of that?
I have not seen any evidence. We don't even get, our pictures, if you will, but they don't call and ask the questions of can I put one here? Or what is it to, unless it's someone with just an individual, and I won't put it on where I want to put this and can I put that there? But now that it's from a development standpoint, we haven't had any interest from anyone.
It wasn't a very hard question, was it?
No, it was a reason that you were telling me, Tom. Well, I figured, you know, and so you made a second session and if I'm, then you were. How about you?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Grant. I will tell you that one time I represented a person by the name of Joe Love. Okay. I did, I, I don't know.
That's true story.
Well, something cute.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
How are you?
Good, very good.
Martha, can you tell us about this library?
Hi, Mary.
Okay.
My priorities are to create some more programming for our children and adults in the community and create some comfortable and sophisticated seating, as we have talked about previously. And some training for the staff. I would like to be able to talk to train everyone, know where they're going to go. And continue to maintain the updates and lead the collection development, continue to provide exceptional, uh, custom service. And provide the highest level service by maintaining and enhancing our satisfaction through training for like teen atmosphere, strong cover for the late years. Our accomplishments, we have purged over sixty-four thousand one hundred pages over the past year. We added four hundred seven new page in my operating hours. We served three hundred and sixty-six children during our children's summer programming. We have circulated over eighteen thousand materials. We purchased recently, for the range of the libraries, actually purchased four of it, crayon tiops that I had circulating it for the children's in the children's room. We designed a staff to monitor and take in and out of materials for the children's area. I am living in one of the staffs into the children's room at the desk to take in and out there and maintain the children's apartment. Um, changed the hour, we maximized staff availability. Remodeled every time books for the children's room. And created some cool teen seating rooms areas with some like, what the children call men and black kids. Oh, well, that is okay. My goal for the fifth year is to create, create the outdoor seating, as we discussed before, and provide off the internet for the public. To maintain the collection, to inform, educate, and inspire the community. Provide basic technology training to the public for computers and cellular phones. Provide the public with workforce knowledge training to help with the waste provisions with the local companies and businesses. Maintain close relations with our schools, promote libraries through local social media advertising and marketing. And provide a great summer reading program for this year and every year.
Any questions? I was quick. I like talking with that. I don't have a question, but I really love the idea of the outdoor seating with, I mean, that was, that was good. Thank you for that. That one's great.
Thank you.
Human resources, Tracy Ralph.
Martha. My duties as part manager is capitalizing and providing community activities. It's my interview, oversee interview process and some children's employment, um, training, the onboarding process. We have some orientation for new hires, assisting in office to new hire, new hire paperwork. Um, upkeep of the personnel manual and have baby and educating employees of new changes. Um, workers compensation claims, unemployment claims, retirement. I also do, um, payrolls, like time to discuss the payroll. Track employees that are team overtime, big time, and F M L A, have distributed the paycheck. Um, have distributed the annual evaluation and maintain those records. I assist with internal investigations as needed. Um, act as personnel department invoices for payment. And, thank you. In the fiscal year twenty nineteen, we received an eighty-four application. We conducted seventy-three interviewings. We had twenty-four new hires and five promotions. My goal for twenty twenty is to attend a faculty management conference, attend all the faculty meetings, conduct an evening work talk for all department heads, complete my FEMA certification, and continue the workforce and new performance. And thank you. I don't have any questions, but I feel good, thank you. Thank you. There is some truth in this, Martha. And I'll be sure to take some of that how long you want me.
Okay, I'll watch. And then I'll be here to help you again. Good morning.
Good morning, Martha.
I'm, I am David, I'm a veteran service officer. Um, the, uh, the duties of a veteran service officer are to, uh, keep officers in a manner where it's, it's necessary. The, uh, the folks need to, need a place to live. Because the needs of veterans are very unique and kind of extraordinary, and that's a lot of them. So we have to have a place adequate for that. Need to maintain communications, uh, with the veteran community and, uh, organizations and the citizen community. Um, you may need your help. And, or maybe, maybe that's one of us. So we, we need to know who, who they are and, and I do, I'm, I'm not a lot, so I do that very well. Um, we maintain contact with employers, relatives, employers of veterans, particularly disabled veterans. Many disabled veterans are able to work and, and be a worker for others. So that, that, the disabled have to work first, um, because his needs are, yeah, to be, you know, very unique, extraordinary. Think that we may be below the need expectation, which a lot of veterans are, or missing, you know, the weakness. Um, kind of hard to pass sessions, keep aggressive state regulations, since we work representative and it's kind of hard, but in exactly what my degree is, my major, to get information from state legislation, but hopefully next time it will be. Uh, keep, we also keep aggressive, um, regulations and rule changes and, and questions, um, that, um, represent the client, uh, medical force, and to evaluate the terms of liability, like. I'm sorry, somebody, I mean, let's do, then look at their, their, uh, their medical, and see if they have time or not. You can't, you can't make a claim against the government that, uh, that says you're going to your back and have to go to the doctor for it in fifteen years. Yeah, you can't just have them say, I, this is because I fell off a truck in nineteen sixty-eight. Yeah, if you didn't go to the doctor then, you didn't go between now and then, it's not, not gonna happen.
Well, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Uh, you were talking about, I'd like to question, keep it up with that. Uh, have you ever reached out to Senator Moss's office or to, uh, now, what, President Sholman's office? Just to see if I could, oh, hey, Mary?
I will make note of Senator Moss's office, no, uh, I did not.
I've always been, seem to be very willing to help any of us when we call.
I will, I'm sure, uh, I suppose that the situation will happen one. We did, we did, we're just, we're, we're, yeah. However, I, I didn't, did, did you kill? Or did you get in the show? Yes, yes.
Oh, both of you, yes.
Um, they go where we go. I, I was his, uh, power attorney from, from whoever comes in. As a power attorney, just to handle their, uh, their claim and anything to do with their client. Can't go by car around, um, 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 um. Um, prepare, uh, claim forms, brief, and some evidence to help support the client. And the only cool way of doing that, is forms can be done on computer and sent electronically, which means the, the VA can put their hands on in four days. Like mailing, they have a thirty day to put their hands on, or it sits in a warehouse, you know, in thirty days perhaps. Everything I send, it's either sent electronically or by fax, fax is forty a little on two. We're not wages and, since I've been, been wearing, um, a bit of a claim back, they were approved. Small numbers, but it's actual, uh, and these were done in record time. One was done in nine weeks and the other was done in less than, uh, ninety-eight. So the VA card, there are, that tells me the time, I have a claim from Rockin' on Moon since two thousand and seven. So it's a slow on mine that the process on, the one that they give the other states. Um, you know, it's kind of doctors and others, relative to, uh, person's official affidavits and evidence for an individual's claim. If, um, sometimes, uh, if the veteran doesn't have yet medical records that they have, that's, that's wrong for that, send it off. I always tell the veteran, don't be gonna try to get the, your medical records. Because some, some medical companies, doctors, that determine up to a dollar page, they can't charge you. And so don't get medical records. Not for the VA, but actually, real doctors, don't be that, they can't charge me, but they can charge you, so, um, I'm pretty strong. Um, the also request, I hear, is important for veteran appeal. And, uh, uh, there are reasons for that, if this client needs it. That's also done by technology and they can, uh, they can now have that with their hands on, just a matter of days. Veterans sit in a warehouse where it, it usually, it's almost a brief, that's the way the VA, they can do that. Also buy a veteran's insurance, location, other matters, and works in cooperation, would be better to stretch than other agencies. There was one time, I was in the military, on my old career, I don't know a lot about health insurance, although I did have to. I, I'm learning, I'm learning from veterans and I'm learning from places online, so I'd like a little better breadth on insurance. Um, uh, I have not gotten so much into, uh, prepared bills and correspondence and that, as, as well as the next, uh, to pay missions with civic functions. I haven't, um, I haven't let all the, uh, general organization, well, general service organization know that I'm here, how to get the touch of it. They want me to come up to their book, I'll be happy to do that. Um, and there is a need to, um, to, uh, get, uh, information out to the, to the public and the veterans. Just, it maintains very well, at all, the, the, the very core way of submitting information. And, um, that's easy to, um, evolve for next year. And this is to, uh, to, uh, special ways, uh, to do things better than we can, well, doing them now. Um, also, I've, I've talked with Angela at the newspaper, that I write a veteran's call, that is to, to terminate information through this, um, also, I'll meet with the county commissioner about that September end, I believe. Um, it would be good, like, to, to get information out. I'm, and I can tell you very quickly, I had a man come to me a few, a couple of weeks ago, and he needed help paying his rent. And I, they had to tell me, you know, that's not what I did. And I said, why don't you sell for a better one? He's seventy-eight years old, he's been eligible for the VA all eight months, since he was sixty-five, dude, is low income. He didn't vote.
But it wasn't retroactive?
No. No, but I think I think I got him about eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars a month. He won't have probably paid his rent anymore. But he should have, I mean, why don't we know that? He, why does he know? Yeah, and, and me personally, when I moved here, I was in town with the child today, for, I didn't know if I was three years. I went back and forth from Lake City, Gabriel, to Dallas, sometime, three times a week.
So that newspaper column would be a way to get some of this information that you can subscribe out.
Absolutely.
Obviously, there are a lot of people that don't know about that.
Um, there are. There's a lot in the VA that a lot of people don't know about. And it's good, it's good people, people right here in our, in our county, in our hometown, is in a, a bad situation. And we can, uh, can I be able to wipe it out? We should cut it out, certainly. Um, I believe that's it for me. Do you have any questions?
Um, yes, I do. I've got one question. Uh, do you think that there is a need to be available more days of the week? Or are you adequately able to take care of the homes that are calling when you, with the day, how many days are you there, Tuesday?
I'm, I'm, I'm there all day Tuesday, half day Wednesday, and all day Thursday. You know, I start to pull up, go up all of it, most of those days. Back to my family, with, uh, Martha calling, so I had to be here this morning. Um, I think it's adequate now, um, but here's the thing, I live across. I live across, across my city, the airport and that office. Oh, I've been scarred with my personal cell phone number. If I called and they need something, and I'm in town, I'm out there. I don't, I mean, the needs of veterans are very, in these kind of times, it's hard to understand that. If, if someone called and they need something, you can tell them, I'm, I'm gonna do it.
I appreciate that dedication. Thank you for that. And also, I do want to, I saw you did this pass, uh, on Monday, the Veterans Day ceremony with.
Thank you. Had a lot of help, yeah.
You had a lot of help and I'll, I'll thank those people too. But that would be really good. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, special project, Danielle here.
Good morning.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, very good.
Yeah.
Duty, uh, cleaning up trash on roads, uh, other assignments that grow apartments when they needed, uh, just other departments in task when needed. Um, just the Chamber of Commerce quite a bit in the past, get the prayer pre-festivals and events that they have. Uh, maintain mowers and other equipment weekly, such sharp blades and, you know, minor repairs we can have. Uh, form various destruction projects, concrete labs, roofs, uh, pretty much anything coming up, painting, minor repairs that we can, we can do. Uh, just our mowing list, we have a pretty big mowing list, uh, from one in the county to the other. Uh, our weekly maintenance, we maintain all of the underground, uh, parks, somehow bathrooms, some don't. Uh, anyway. Uh, this is a list of, uh, projects that we have to prepare for and, and the tasks we have to perform and get ready for these events. Some of them is a pretty big deal, some of them is not so bad. Uh, the mowsing, pines, forest, what I've, uh, that's the main one that takes us pretty much a full week to prepare for it. Uh, our copper foot this year is, uh, mostly on a construction standpoint. We replaced the sand fence and we actually put a new fence all the way around the outside of Hogg's Park and put piles up. And we're in the process of putting a third row of piles down. We're probably seventy-five, completely without. Uh, cut trees, bushes, clean up, bring in cemetery, that was a pretty big deal. Uh, we got it now where we can pretty much mow it. And they got a few more stuff to grind, then we should be able to maintain it. Uh.
Who's guarding the stall?
Uh, Dan, Danny Anderson. Cause I do, uh, Mr.
Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Rob Lynn had to look before and he was on contact. I went out and walked him the other day, so they would know exactly what, what we're doing, so.
But there's something to share that, doesn't it?
Yeah, he's very capable of that. Uh, we did some small jobs for the garden club and the health department. Uh, we did another slab and, uh, for a tenant building finished it. Then we did, uh, there was a couple of places we had to cut on county property that D was in fire with clean up. Uh, we helped Dan with the living quarters at Keaton Beach Drive Out. We built a new compactor slab at Blue Springs Road outside and shelter and put a new compactor in. We replaced some of the rod of copper fence at Teddy Brook Park, top installed public spencers and trash cans and soap spencers at Hogg's Park and it's keeping beach boat ground. Uh, we replaced the skylight panel of the hangar at the airport. We completed a pair of blue road outside tenant buildings. We helped force lab for a back cage at the pork complex. Uh, we made, we built a rail fence around the, to, to the shady roof park. And yesterday we completed up to about ninety miles down to the, hooking everything up at the post side at Anthony's, so we're all in for that. That it?
Okay.
Any questions?
How many employees work with you?
Just me.
Just you and you're, you do all of them.
Me and the one, one inmate squad.
Wow, that's a, that's a lot of work. I, I want to tell you, I appreciate what you've been doing at Hogg's Park. Uh, I know you've, you consistently gone down there and, and it's a lot better than what it was. And I'm just hoping that, that I appreciate that. Appreciate all the other work that you do too.
We're trying, we used to have three squads and now we're trying to leave all that to one squad. It's, it's been a, I'm in the past, but we still try a little bit.
I mean, it's been a year squad.
There's six, sometimes, uh, anybody.
Appreciate the twenty minutes in there. We have business, yeah.
I appreciate all your hard work out here at the Blue Road outside.
Yep.
I go out there to take my trash off two, three times a week. But these projects are, they're selling it very nice. Appreciate it.
Is there any more questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
County extension, Lori Whiggin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm Lori Whiggin and I've operated extension service now in twenty-three years. And I've been the interim county extension director for almost a year now. So the extension has a very unique setup, I'd say unlike any other county department because, um, our employees have, with appointments, we receive some funding, bar salaries from the county, and some from the University of Florida. So I wanted you to see here a breakdown of, um, talent staff that's done in our office. We have eight point two five STEs and then we have seven point five STEs that are seasonal employees. But basically, the counties provide funding for day camps, great day camps for staff to work during the summer. We're actually the only county in the state of Florida that a county that affords to missus provides funding for that. So we appreciate that. And that was part of the, I've worked over, over twenty years, I got to work and we started to increase funding for that. And we've, uh, to maintain it and increase those, um, seasonal employees. So we, um, definitely appreciate that. If you also look on here, we have two and a half STEs that are one hundred percent state and federally funded. And those are towns in our county, all local, um, employees that, um, provide good, um, for local individuals. But that does not cost the county, um, anything, even down to all the support systems. It's all federal, uh, federally funded through a grant that I, I'm handling based on. So highlight, um, some of our programs. The family nutrition program gives that program I'm talking about. We received this past year just over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, you know, lawyer that, for that one program. That provides nutrition education for all teachers, educators in the county. We have a primary store for nutrition education in the county. Um, but that's not actually costing the county anything. We're just fortunate enough to be able to still continue to get that finance. And we've had that, that entire time that I've been employed. It's just a slowly increase in, um, in the amount that we receive. Just for that one nutrition program that we oversee, we had over two thousand hours of volunteer hour contributed in one year. At that rate, that was about evaluated as volunteer hours per year, that would have cost the county over fifty-two thousand dollars that was just for that one nutrition program in one year. So just to kind of show you the value of that program that didn't cost the county anything. We reached, uh, five thousand, six hundred and forty-six individuals through that program, about youth and adults. Now, that does include duplicates, which you'll see at the end of, um, of the slide. We're working on increasing that number, eliminating duplicates. Um, and duplicates makes, like I say, one time I participated in four nutrition programs. Their count is four times. So, um, the percentage of those four thousand, two hundred and eighty are MAP eligible. So you see the high level, high numbers that our county, um, actually does have of, uh, MAP recipients. Um, just to highlight the four H programs for this past year, we have about three hundred youth that participate in four H clubs, which are solely ran by four H volunteers. Those are one hundred percent were by volunteers for that program. Our school enrichment, we had about thirty-five hundred youth. That does include duplicates, but some children may participate in more than one, uh, four H program through the school system. We also had four H, four hundred youth participate in four H summer camps, but also that is duplicates as well, to kind of, um, make the number very clear to you. The next three slide shows charts to kind of show you what our four H numbers have fallen since two thousand fourteen. And you see they stay pretty consistent, they increase the time in it, um, but overall, they stay, um, pretty consistent. We reach actually all cases, full grade youth in some capacity with four H, whether it's clubs, camp, or school enrichment, um, all of those youth actually are reached. Our four H programs, um, the spread that Abby gave was from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen. And through different grants to help assist with that program, we received a little over forty-five thousand dollars. And this slide is a real important slide to look at. If you look at the, over a six-year period, what's just volunteered gave to the four H program, you really see this is the heart and soul of the four H program. Without all of you, the program would not exist. Based on their number of hours that they go contribute or financial contributions that were given, you're looking at over three hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that's a very, um, large impact to the county. Next, Victor Blanco is our marine and natural resources agent. And Victor, um, reaches, uh, resident high counties through various programs. He wanted to kind of give you an idea of some of the different programs that he does see and the type of audiences and the number of individuals that he's reaching. So this, that kind of FYI. The next page is as well, he shows you kind of group learning participants and has it broken out by social media individuals, uh, reach through that, or also even through website visits as well. We also try to look at all of ours, like what is our retirement estimate? So our marine program is easily, um, able to do that. So we have a program the university will have where they can basically plug in all this information and kind of spit out these numbers to say what that program represents and can generate dollar wise. So Victor, he's there over a three-year period, some of the economic impacts to our county. When I worked with the numbers, I thought they were a little on the upside. But this is a program the university uses for research-based across the entire state. So just to kind of get an idea of where this is coming out, where those figures, that is, um, it's a research-based program. So that's where those, um, figures are coming from. Our, um, each year we do a report of accomplishment to the university of Florida. We have to show all the programs we're working on, our objectives, um, impacts that we're making, and then we always look at some goals for the next year. So our number one goal at this point is hiring and adding, uh, natural resources. And we kind of employ a quarter culture in that title. That job could go live in the next week. Um, there was a three, everyone who retired through a buyout system, which Clay often did. And we had about forty-eight individuals that were committed to it. Well, they estimated twenty. We had forty-eight. So the university, when they thought they were break even and kind of regaining some money, they went wrong, they went to hold again. So for a year, they closed those positions, everyone that, um, that did have the buyout. So now those positions have become, uh, back available. And we will be advertising for that position, like I say, about the next week. It actually goes, um, to a nationwide, every land-grant university system promotes, um, the job that's off the US, it also will be advertised locally. And we are hoping to hire someone who is qualified in that area. And if we don't have enough applicants or have no qualified applicants, we will be re-advertising. The universities, they have a screening process, they screen all the applicants, and they actually, you go for a day-long interview there. So you're going through a very, very strenuous, um, interview process. You actually do a presentation, you do teaching. Once they narrow it down to three, two different individuals, we'll bring them back in the county. We'll invite county committees with our advisory committee members to kind of, we're considering on different presentations. And then that way it gives the advisory committees some input as well as, um, you all into, to our next county agent, um, that will cover the agriculture and quarter culture, um, area. So that's, that's our number one goal, um, to start off with. Our nutrition program, we're trying to work on reaching everyone through a duplicated number. So it's fine that we have the duplicated, but we're just trying to really scale and reach everyone. So our nutrition education is something common. Our four H coordinator would like to, um, reach out to St. Hackey and State Grove area. St. Hackey has been reached before through day camps. Um, we just, though that program went away because of participation, to be honest with you at that time, but that is something we're looking at in the future to maybe host a day camp or two there again. And then one in St. Hackey, which we have partnered with the four H girls club in St. Hackey. We have done that. So that's something that she would like to work on. And then just recruiting and training the volunteers. Because like I say, that's your backbone of four H program. They're actually to implement the four H program. And then our marine agent, he just really wants to still increase awareness of, um, just what all goes on and what all has to do with marine ecosystem and the marine environment. Because we still have, um, you know, there's that, we don't have that education background that a lot of people, um, that they don't have, um, within the community. But he's still really wanting to do filming on that. He would like to re-sign it and expand the factory size. And then still, Victor is very instrumental in going into the schools and working with K C programs, um, and also the homeschool group and doing students, um, monitoring, um, he has some signings, um, marine specimen ID classes. Victor has a ten-person four H appointment. So each extension agent has to work within the four H component. So when we say there's a four H extension agent, everybody who's given extension has a four H appointment. So really, everybody in that office is sort of in four H. It's not just that one extension agent. Just to kind of, um, clarify that area. So that's the thing we're working on. Any questions?
Doing a good job.
Yeah, right, right, going right. The, uh, the rest that you spoke about with St. Hackey and State Grove, just a little bit, what would that entail?
So what we did here is we partnered with a school system in St. Hackey and we helped two weeks for summer day camps. And we actually had two staff that were hired from that area to implement the day camps in St. Hackey. Uh, uh, that's kind of what I think people see. The cost that we spent on that previous, I think it was probably ten years ago when we did that. We, the number of participation and involvement had gotten so low, we couldn't justify what we were spending for that program. So I think that's what she was looking at, and we'd be partnering with that school and hosting some day camps for the school. Uh, like I say, we do a lot of gardening education there. And we partnered with actually Dixie County because they have a student nutrition program and they're twenty, you know, they're just twenty-nine, the label is forty-three five. And we've had some high recruiting there. That we're partnering with now as well as some master gardeners that were in St. Hackey. So I don't know if she was looking at kind of partnering with Dixie for that potentially, which would be, um, because a lot of companies do have day camps. But that was, uh, was a previous partnership. The partnership with, um, State Grove would be possibly partnering with the Boys and Girls Club or the, um, the State Grove, um, community center, possibly holding something there.
Cool, sounds good. Good job.
I appreciate you coming to the church, it's, it's nutritional, about legal. I think it's a lot of, uh, I lost a little weight. Can't tell. But do you have anything else down, coming down on the pipe that you could use?
So I'm actually on my fourth church for that program. That was a, um, grant that was called Staples Family. That was a, um, grant that was called Staples Family Nutrition Program, and four counties, um, work somewhat with interstate, implement the program that was piloted in North Carolina. So, um, we actually, and not to brag on myself, because I have to pay Patterson, has been my, um, she's been my volunteer in our program, um, she worked with me, she put some grant funds, got five to ten hours a week, and we have started over a hundred and twenty residents. And when you look at the number, it may not sound that really high, but these individuals are coming to our fourteen-week program every week. So, it's not a one-time class, they're coming for fourteen weeks straight. And I am actually, like I say, I'm on my fourth church, it's a church of our advocacy. So, it's been a research-based project. Uh, we're actually starting in January, another research project, which is, um, is actually Daycare I'll be working with, doing something very similar, but working with, um, Daycare, um, with the students within the Daycare, the entrance, then also working with our parents. So, that, that will be a new research project, I'm sorry, but I'm not continuing actually with the Bible maintenance. That has been, um, a very fun, um, new program to do.
Thank you. Okay, the grants department. Good morning.
Morning.
Okay. The grants department abides for administering numerous types of grants for the county, ranging from demo and reconstruction, and rehabilitation housing, emergency medical equipment, solid waste, recreation and park facility development, doing applications. The grants department works closely with its community and local organizations on various public service projects, including housing and transportation building management programs. The department also networks with various states and federal funding and regulatory agencies, developing and building unknown relationships on behalf of the county, which is kind of a common thing in the state. Um, these are some of our current, our pending grants we have going right now. Um, the airfield lighting, we are closing that out, we just finished that project. Um, we are getting ready to start our St. Hackey boat grant stalking project with a F C I P and C P I grant. Um, we have a solid waste grant, the volunteer fire assistance grant, the C D B C and SIP grant, and completed our D E O's training technical assistance grant that we did our trail match plan with. And of course, we are heading approval for the FURVAP grant, the support complex, and Southside Park. Um, I administer the transportation disadvantage program. We receive nineteen thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars grant every year, which funds the grant department salary, benefits, and supplies. Um, I prepare all reporting to the, be submitted to the board of commissioners for the transportation disadvantage, and I am the county liaison with the same transit. I'm a counsel for the oversight of the local coordination board for the transportation disadvantage, and the scheduling of all meetings. Um, Miss Pam Beagle serves as our L C B staff, and the L C B members are represented by various states and local agencies, as required by the board of commissioners for the transportation disadvantage. The program provides an income settlement to all the citizens of the county, as well as the weekly settlement to the VA, clinic, and Danville, and Tallahassee for the veterans. In two thousand eighteen, we have seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-six trips. We have, the county receives three hundred fifty thousand every year through the SIP program. In two thousand eighteen and nineteen, the program has completed seven demo listening construction projects, eight rehabilitation projects, and provided down payment assistance to four first-time homebuyers, and we have actually already started two more demo listening In two thousand and eighteen, we were awarded a C D B C grant in the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand. Um, four demo listening construction projects and one rehab project have been completed. Um, actually, that's not correct, we have actually completed the six demo listening construction projects now, and we are preparing to put it out this winter. So, that hopefully, whenever the grant place will reopen, we will be able to reapply for the community. And the county is required to provide a max of fifty thousand for the grant, which we provide assistance. The SIP program provides first-time homebuyers assistance, up to ten thousand for qualified low to moderate income homes. The program provides up to twenty-five thousand in housing rehabilitation assistance, and up to seventy-five thousand in demo listening reconstruction for low-income homeowners. Mobile homes cannot be repaired or purchased with this program. All areas of the county can be assisted with assistance, as the program of state's undislocated underprisons is offered. The C D B C program provides rehabilitation up to sixty thousand for qualified low-income homeowners, and up to ninety thousand in demo listening reconstruction for low-income homeowners. Two homes are becoming to be fifty-one percent or more structurally unsound. Mobile homes can be demolished with this program. Only homeowners in the unincorporated areas of the town can be assisted with C D B C. The grants department will be assisting with the administration of the pot one and pot three, the Water Horizon Settlement Grant and S T P Amendment. The pot one funds are over four million, and the pot three funds are twelve point six million. And then we will also be, um, helping with the administration of the fast plane rail grant, um, this has an amount of the grant of eight point one million.
Yes, and we need to think about sending the special, or ship house into a higher number than seventy-five thousand for.
We are going to be amending our housing plan.
Can we build housing more, if you want to?
Right, right. So, we will be amending that, and we'll also be looking at amending, um, the, that we can demolish mobile homes.
Okay, and that's, well, when you demolish them all, can you replace them with a ship house?
Yes, that's the only thing we can do, is the demo listening reconstruction program, and currently SIP does not allow it, our housing plan doesn't, the C D B C does. So, we can't repair them or anything, but we can demolish them.
When was, when was that topic?
Um, we haven't been given specific dates yet, but we're thinking somewhere around February. So, we will be, you know, getting our C D B C grant, the current one closed down, so that we can reapply.
Can a person go ahead and apply now, and get on the unit, or do we have to wait until a certain time to reach?
They need to wait, because we'll have to, in the one makes sure that we receive the grant, and then we'll, as an avatar, um, process advertising that we have received them.
Do you know how many applications you have now that are waiting for these to be done?
Um, we actually don't have any C D B C. And one of the, one of the things with the C D B C program now, is they don't allow us to do any homes that have plug-in on the property.
They have plug-ins.
And we have plug-ins on the property. Even if the house doesn't fit any plug-ins, they don't allow it. So, we've been able to work with, um, a few homeowners who've had enough property that they could actually, um, cut it off and get two different parcel numbers, and that'd be for the system.
But now with the ship program?
You can't do any plug-ins.
So, how did you decide if a person is going to call off of the ship program or the C D B C?
Well, SIP can help anywhere in the county, in the city limits, in Alzari, we can't do anything in the city limits.
Yeah, well, I mean, play the scenario out, you don't have ten houses, and you can only deal with three houses, and all ten, it'd be twelve houses. How do you select the three you're going to phone?
We do it first time.
First time, first?
First of three, if you give it a chance.
So, if you think marriage, you get all of this fixed, or you don't get it.
A lot of times, we'll give people, I give out a lot of applications, and we won't give them that.
They won't give you all that banking, it's a bank.
Well, I hope so, because they don't want to live in that house anymore. They, you constructed, you caused, and they decide they're going to move. Can they sell that house and keep the money?
No, if they sell the house, we put a twenty-year loan on it, and it's forgiven, you know, twenty of a year. If they sell it, they owe the county back whatever portion is left. As long as they live in it, over twenty years, it's completely forgiven. But, you know, if they sell it, then they owe the county back whatever portion of money is left on it.
So, a twenty-year lease, and you live in ten years, and there's ten years left on the lease, that would mean, it means, if you have the money, you're still far back to the county.
Well, half of the money, whatever the price was when we built the home, you could sell it for more in four years. So, whatever portion that was paid with the grant fund, they would be responsible for fifty percent of that back.
Have you had that happen?
Um, I don't know that that happened at all. I've not, not seen that happen.
Yes, ma'am. Some people would die, with their five years of living in a house, and that house is not owned by somebody else.
With the C D B C program, if, um, we only use C D B C funds, if an applicant has a house and they pass away, um, it can go to a family member. The SIP program is different. The SIP program is something that you weigh, either they can have a family member who is income-qualified within the home, or they would be responsible for, yeah, that's the county's problem.
I see, I see that. I would see that, in these cases, when there's, um, money owed on a, on a mortgage, a mortgage, um, um, you know, I've been, what, you know, do, I've prepared a fast action, um, most of the years, um, on the program, and so, the money has to be returned a good many times when there is a sale, because they, it has to be satisfied, for their title to go to the purchaseor.
Right.
So, uh, and then, of course, it's, uh, I would say, in my experience, it's hard to understand, most people have, have lived in them, and then they get it satisfied, and when they done, they live, you know, for, and of course, they don't get any money, but they got the house. So, that's what happens when, uh, when, uh, when things are completed, right?
And I, um, actually had, um, an applicant call, wanting to know what their payoff was going to be, because they're selling the home, and we let them know what portion they owe back to them.
Can the county public work for that?
Go on.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty good. Before we get started, I want to introduce Scott Knight, my road superintendent, and Brenda, uh, Mum Gordon, Martha, Megan, and Dee, Dee Hucks, and the other two, of course, I'm going to recognize them. Uh, this is an organization start of the road department, and it employs, and some of the equipment they operate. Some of the accomplishments we got in the last year, our graders over the north, three thousand two hundred ninety-three point four miles, on the south end, we graded thirty-four thousand one hundred thirteen, uh, forty-three thou, uh, forty-three, thirty-four thousand thirteen point nine inch of mile on the south end. Uh, we prepared a rock in fourteen to fifteen inch hole, completed a hundred and eight work orders from commissioners, in addition to persons calling into the office, which I think you're going to see a big change in your work order system, because Brenda has started adding the call names that we get in the office, we're starting to add those to work order system, so this number is definitely going to grow. It's going to be a big, big work on the other end. Uh, the assistant G P with a hotline installation, uh, we got relocated into our new office, uh, completed flooded road repairs. Uh, that was from last, last year, we finished up, uh, on the flooding roads that we had from last year. Uh, repaired ditches that were oiled up in the flooding from last, last, just a month ago. Uh, moved several feet from, uh, Porch Elphahole, and several other streets around the county that were on the right of way, and were hazardous, hazardous to, uh, people in the traffic. Uh, completed, uh, Cedar Island pipe replacement, uh, relocated Cap Page and People Beach, in addition to resurfacing a portion of that, uh, replaced, uh, two forty-inch pipe in a middle age, trimmed it in Blumax Countywide all year, which we got those in shop right now, so we'll get started back soon to get those back.
How many do you have, Hank?
We got, uh, we've been hitting hot spots, because we got the four behind, because we had the old and, and the other state road channel, and we got this new one, and we're just going to drop now. Uh, I would like to get it while I keep one on the north end and one on the south end, but when we get them back, we hit the hot spot first, and then we go from there.
So, is that done, um, um, on request, or do you have somebody that wants to?
I'll, I'll have people call into the office and request, uh, we trim a road, and it's, it's, we ride out in M S C, but we'll, we'll move them back anyway, if our county.
Yeah, I turned in front of two, I was sitting out, yes, um, so it's requests only, that y'all won't just go out and?
Until we catch up. Once we catch up, then we, we on a routine route, just like my graders, that's my future plan for the next. Uh, we also mowed several miles of roads that the county contractor does not mow. Completed Keegan Beach, grass removal project, we did that probably three, two or three times this year, uh, removing grass off the beach. Worked at the bug round there in Scottsfield, and I had several full-time employees, uh, pull a lot of, you know, hiring people who want to work the bug round, I had to send some line boards down there, uh, they were pretty stressed with time, so, it was long hot days down there, and they work all the way along, too, so we got that done. Uh, we still distributed many, many can bags, I, I couldn't tell you no more about it, it was long, somehow, but, uh, between last year's storms and one this year, we, we obviously, yes, two thousand or better, that we still distributed. Uh, my fine man, he maintains the road, uh, county road signs countywide from the north to the south end. I have Mary from Scottsfield, go down to Hodges Park, and, and, uh, she actually goes to St. Hackey, some of those patterns, she's getting a deep at Scottsfield, so I have somebody down there, and, and, uh, all the slims, tree trunks and debris from Spring Hill Cemetery, probably spent a week and a half from Better Hall, and all that stuff out to the landfill. We keep maintaining all the tinsel locks, county own, uh, county own lock within the city, we keep those loaded and maintained. Cleaned several ditches around the area in St. Hackey down there, and still got some more to go down there. We actually put out four dump loads of coal mix milling, patching potholes by hand this past year. We packed all the CC grays, along with the clubhouse, Captain Road Morgan right there in Mount Union, and several roads in St. Hackey due to the flooding. Worked on the flooding on the Antelope Street out there, where we performed de-watering activities for three weeks straight, twenty-four seven, in St. Hackey, not too long, it's called Long Dead, and we probably hauled between, and this varies, because some of the rock prices are a little different. When we haul surge rock, uh, we haul between fourteen hundred and fifty and fifteen hundred loads of lime rock this year, through those roads we're going to have them. And then dump rocks, you got? Five running right now. We got, we just want to see them working out for a year. Any questions?
If I have any questions, I want to tell you, I appreciate what you do for me and my district, I know a lot of requests in, and lots of comments, it's, uh, very rapidly, and I appreciate that.
A lot of lots of that goes, it falls back on my health. A lot of luck, all that goes, it falls back on my health and our involved doctors.
Exactly, you can tell me how much I'll pay you.
Perfect, good. Appreciate what you do, and I'm happy to put the rest to it. I believe you did that back. Oh, this is sound good.
Thank you. Purchasing Sarah White. Nice, nice. Um, so, the last part to release is, uh, not, I have to know the first name and role, and sure following the, um, powers to that, and purchasing, um, consult with the other departments to determine what they need, how much they need, uh, that kind of thing, and that. Um, working on the warehouse, we can get ways to include the warehouse, how we can have spots there. Um, so, a lot of it is, a lot of research, a lot of research, and, uh, because I'm doing that with private, and everything else. Um, maintaining records, um, maintaining records for the cost and commodities of the department releases, um, reading and reporting for items that offer leads or, and don't require leads. Uh, I would kind of set on this price, um, okay, price is a stock, and then there is making sure being low cost. Uh, we were just, for example, um, pine saws. Um, I had, look, I found another supplier that said it was about three dollars a gallon, and that in turn actually is about the, maybe a tender to lower its cost. Um, but it's a saving of about two thousand dollars, you know, something like that. Same thing with hand sanitizer, I've spoken to not a pure land or different brands, saving about three dollars a gallon. My dollars per this year, continuing to research smaller prices, working on new line warehouse, practicing to ensure better quality control, um, and reduce the amount of running stock, and so, it's a real cost. So, all the parts that's been serving, some are constitutional, all the others are just one option, and the silver box and electric boxes available, purchase free, you know, some of your coffee drinker, or whatever.
Right, some of them, yeah, anything that is, uh, not all that is kept in stock, but all purchase orders do come through, yes.
Okay. So, what, the company, the department, you know? Sounds like you're doing a good job. Any, any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Very cool, we have four more to take care of, so.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Back to Perry, Perry Call Air Force, uh, this is, uh, nineteen twenty-three, uh, in the local air base. Surely you may remember the Rennet, but I don't know, and I was, I was kidding, I remember riding out there, it was a good place, the airport, I remember seeing all this and some of the little kids, holding books together from the machine gun, I remember some of that going on out there, but, uh, basically, what my basic duties are is, I always kind of joke around with a pump gas and no grass. That's something. Uh, keep up with FAA and DOT reports, and keep up the looking fuel reports, and how much fuel is there, and so forth. Matchen up what the, uh, credit card says versus what the box says. Put on the match, it's not the don't, so you gotta figure out some things. Uh, maintain the fuel system, maintain the airport light, which you stretch them all out and a road, it'd be about five miles long. We got about five miles fence to maintain, five buildings, or just five meter fires. Got about a hundred and ten acres of asphalt. Hundred and ten acres of asphalt, nearly, they, about a hundred acres of asphalt all we gather. We got about a hundred and thirty acres of concrete, the rest of it has been mowed and maintained, which is about four hundred and seventy-five acres given today. We have two, uh, although that lucky, public workers help me out quite a bit with different things happening over the years. Special projects have helped me out quite a bit, especially Sheriff's Department, they've sent people, I've had them made, so, nothing really. Um, we got several hangars, we got five, actually, we got five buildings, several hangars. The main thing we tried to do was, I got with the good facility, we had, you know, good pavement, we got airport, and then you spent a lot of money killing it over the years. The main thing I, I did was I preached on line presence, there's a, a program called Fortline. And all we thought here, as long as I stay put, the clouds, as you will, all we thought here, uh, about you, just, uh, just app on the phone or their iPad. And the reason why we need to get it to the phone is because you don't describe to it as the SEO, uh, airport, it's not on the list. And once we got on the list, and once we got, you know, the line, and everybody agreed, boom, it's, uh, it's west side, and it's south, we, we kept a lot more trash. We, we basically showed it on the electronic map, because, again, the world's going to take the maps to electronic maps, and let's put it on the electronic one. And so, uh, that's what I did. Okay, we changed fuel suppliers, it's kind of a funny story that that happened, our oldest supplier, still sixty-six, uh, basically, our sign is kind of black. We're lucky it didn't truck to the forest after a few months. So, that's a perfect sign, they said, well, we won't contract all that kind of stuff, so we went out to bid, and actually, that was a better price than shit. A better deal, so we, we, we got our mixed sign now. That was part of trying to make the place look better. We updated the, uh, the tape bunch, this one, the other one was a, uh, dial, I put the credit card in, it waited about two or three minutes, and it had it. Big credit card, this one does it about five seconds. It's a gas saver base, and it's more likely when you come across it, that's your modern gas station base. Okay, accomplishments we made, eighteen thirty-six, Jamie was saying, uh, we've had eighteen, eighteen thirty-six with, uh, reliving new LED lights, which is one of, helping the name, also going to bring our overall power building up. We had a little eighteen thirty-six GAS survey, air GAS survey, with next to three D survey. Reason why we did that, five thousand feet of magic number runway distance. If you're under five thousand feet, you get a certain class of airplane, if you're over five thousand feet, you get a very class of airplane. Well, that's dictated by the insurance, that's insured airplanes. And we actually had a five thousand thirteen foot runway, we were focused to forty-nine hundred eighty-six. To get to the five thousand thirteen feet, we had to get the air GAS survey accomplished. What we got accomplished, we then, we then, uh, re-focused the five thousand thirteen feet, so it gets larger airplane, and it was brand for different. And, um, right now, we're mitigating trees, we're, we're in process of writing that, writing that, writing text to the, uh, R S D side right now. We got some trees we're up to, uh, last year, coming in as far as three D survey we did. And, uh, basically, we boil it down to, we're getting more airplanes, we're getting bigger airplanes, and it's just, basically, we're equal fuel cells. Past eighteen months, give or take, with the channel on board, and sort of getting a long line presence up and so forth. Our fuel cells gone up by fifty-seven percent, traffic's going up by thirty-two percent. And when I was first hired, that's what I was asked to do, was get fuel cells up, get the traffic channel up at the airport. Play for, we're lucky, the economy has stuck with us, and we're, we're doing pretty well.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
On the fifty-seven percent increase, I thought before we got that net growth?
Twenty-six thousand gallons, thirty-nine thousand gallons.
Was it how much money?
A year, uh, money, money wise? About four dollars a gallon. Well, I, I, I measure everything in gallons instead of, because, instead of money, because of your price there is. That's why I measure everything in gallons, because that gives them more realistic view of where I'm moving the cars, six thousand gallons, money a gallon. We went, um, well, prepare for that question, sorry.
That's okay, that's all fun, we'll figure it out, fun. We have to get what our profit, um, margin is, so we can, we can count it like that. Yeah, that's, um, I get ready to put you on the phone.
That's, that's a good question, we didn't prepare for that question, we don't know.
Just give that one, that's fine.
I guess, I guess they call it thing gallons, but I don't think it's hard to buy.
That's kind of all right, it's okay.
Anyway, buildings and grounds, uh, pretty much every, I mean, the, the big hangars coming over, pretty much all of our big hangars, large hangars, all of those hangars, studies and builders are rented out right now. Which is, which is good, we got income from it. The tree harvest is just, is, is about thirty thousand dollars or something, everything, it's in that area anyway. Hurricane life, this is kind of interesting. We were the last airport, uh, uh, we were just on the outside of the, of damaged airport, of, of large damaged areas. Uh, Dick Energy, he's going to get his, he's going to go to Nick's money. Dick Energy stayed out there, and we had, probably on our busiest week, about five solid miles of vehicles. Whether it be bucket trucks, whether it be semi, whether it be food vehicles, whether it be, what have you, gas trucks, we had a ton of gas trucks at one time. And, um, that's actually led into something, it's going to go into that sweep. Because we're going to come a semi permanent staging area, there's some, what, I mean, what we're looking at anyway, that's going to come up on, on speed on that thing. We're going to come to semi permanent staging area, some of the sleeper, so. There's, uh, shower trailers, sleeper trailers. Well, we're just in a good area, twenty south quarter in the Carolina, and, you know, it'd be, uh, the type of contender of the law. And we're part of, kind of part of that, the way we're rubbing up on get here, the store that we have in any way, hopefully, hopefully it's true. Yes, I'm a lot with it. But, um, anyway, fixed projects we got coming up, the April lighting. Uh, what basically what I want to do, when you text me in right now, the air force, you text me in the kind of a really dark area, all I want to do is get the agents to, uh, take some kind of time to wait around, and they text me in at night with the air force. Uh, thankfully, safety realignment project is something FAA is making to do, but they're funding, they're basically making, so, uh, I'll make you notice on some of the highways right now, where you have forty-five degree angle roads going in, they're backed off and coming in ninety degree angles. They're doing the same thing at airports. That way, the devil doesn't have any back windows, if they pull up to a runway perpendicular, they can see both ways. They'll get forty pulled out. That's a lot, that's an issue. We're still, we're still working on solar farm project, you know, or, or even paying the hay farm, and, um, basically trying to turn the grass, you know, from, from expense to income, is what the whole point is, is. Solar farming, solar farm project, I'm not sure if that's going to become a tradition, or, or, right now, they're kind of taking the living and fruit, they're taking the big farms. These, the Daisy ones, they'll build those out, and maybe in the future, they, they said, we, we have an eatable proposal, and they said, they're going to come back in a second wave. Probably hit some areas like ours. We got one of the largest open areas in the county. If you look at the county map, you can see the airport kind of, it's a, it's a clear dog, in the middle of it. Uh, another project I'm working on, I'm trying to become the fuel supplier to, uh, MedTran, their midic, free helicopter. Right now, they're just taking up fuel from here to there, I want to become a nice supplier too, and that way we get our diesel sales up quite a bit.
Yeah.
Nothing else to work on. And y'all have any questions for me? You consider planning part of that property in country, against the suburbs, or if? Hey, we haven't talked about it, we've been talking about doing, getting a hay farm and versus trees. Yeah. Well, you know, I don't know, they may have some more land to lose then, can't do pretty much. There's another five years enough, you might wish you could pay, you could have it back, but it just came back yet. Right. That's a lot of land to buy. It is. You got a pretty good truck around there, so. Yes, a little five foot thin, looks like a pretty new. It's about a load of your load, it's only a little bit, yeah, it's a little bit, yeah. Yeah, there's, there's a different gap without being, uh, explained.
Thank you, or, thank you, John.
Forty foot or, you know, that's, that's right.
Thank you. Engineering, you know, so.
Good morning, Mary.
Good morning.
Um, engineering consists, uh, myself, the county engineer, and currently, we do have one vacant engineer position that is advertised. And hopefully, sometime in the near future, that will come to, um, happen. Primarily, the duties of the county engineer, uh, in a nutshell, is we are more of support type department. Uh, primarily for capital driven projects that we undertake, uh, from a county perspective, as well as providing assistance to the general public for information, um, home has needs, they have it. We kind of categorize that into more optional responsibilities. Uh, with respect to capital driven projects, we do the any permit submissions, whether that be state, uh, local, or federal submissions, as well as providing some special, top echelon, um, actual detail design jobs for grant applications as well. Relative to some of the development things that we were discussing earlier, uh, whether that is a public or a private development, we need to pass with okay, uh, any type of infrastructure oversight and review, whether that be the roads, or more, and facilities, et cetera. And then the last, um, area that I was going to point out is that, um, any of the contractual agreements that we deal with, with consultants, that's my office, we should make sure that's there. From a budgetary perspective, the general cost centers that I oversee are the engineering, the water management, the landfill, and the secondary road projects. Um, those, uh, total up for this current budget year, a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. Moving forward, there are DOT based projects, which are strapped off, uh, fifty and, uh, L F D, this is a little legacy program, cost center. You can see a list, uh, there of various roads that are currently active agreements that we have with DOT and the federal government. And if you look through those, the, uh, total of those is right around six and a half million dollars, uh, funding for infrastructure improvements in this county. And then adding those two together, the, uh, developments and the, and the DOT ones, it comes up to a little seven million dollars. Kind of looking back, uh, decapping, you know, some of the projects that we've been responsible for, and just stayed in. Uh, one of the more notable in the community was the Hodges Park tier completion, uh, after her being come through from sixteen. Uh, completely wiped it out, uh, we went through kind of a voided process with, uh, being trying to secure some funding for that. Ultimately, in the final successful, and we finished that, um, like last year. Development reviews, as, uh, Mr. Griner mentioned, they have, uh, like I said, did, um, some times have, where we might have one every other month, it seems like. Uh, all I can recall from last year is two. Uh, one of those, kind of got a little deep into the process, hasn't completed. And then the second one is kind of midstream right now, from a planning stage, they committed some preliminary stuff, but, um, I anticipate that one being one next year for a recent completion. The, uh, next one is the report at body certification, as you all well know, we went through kind of a heated process of a lot of different nuances of what, what you can do, what you can't do, which is important, which isn't important, and, um, you know, it was a, a large effort to assemble that information and present it. And I just, um, want to ask quickly, and provide. After that, um, we coordinate a lot of what you walk up to on the front desk of building planning departments, you can click around the screen, you can see the GAS data. Engineering is responsible for all of that, maybe, we, we maintain that behind the scenes. In addition to that, there is, uh, an additional function where the nine-one-one, um, information that is used for dispatch of our sheriff's, uh, local, bond enforcement agencies. That information comes from us, um, we actually, uh, I'm already got on the houses, the blowers, the, for the ring, um, for things. We forward that to them through weekly updates or monthly updates, uh, we receive them downstairs, so single family residences or mobile homes that somebody gets a new home, they get a new address, so that new address needs to make its way somewhere through the chain. They get a new address, well, that new address needs to make its way somewhere through the chain. Finally wind up at a state or a community service, they know how to get to you. That information is provided by me through, um, help looking through the sheriff's department. Uh, one of the things that, um, I want to hear more from you with is some of the road roll off by project certification, um, any of the stuff that, um, Oakland and the project do with relative to the flash replacements or shelter or site drainage. Particularly we have some involvement, um, with that to a certain degree. The D P pipeline, which is, um, one of the main things that are going through the team right now, uh, I assess, and anyone gets to run off that day, um, issues. With review of those right away use applications, uh, some ultimate recommendation on that stuff could be, or should be approved. The, um, the last one that I included on there was, um, as you are all aware, the Mr. W auction online, and all my auctions, and that we were surprisingly and pleasingly able to complete and fail on, uh, local property. Underneath that is the groundwater management, um, this probably came a lot more in public eye because of the recent rainfalls, uh, last year, or earlier this year with the pandemic. And that is, um, that we started providing information, we have data sets and things that help see where the problem areas should be and, um, offer insight into kind of a, a way to alleviate some of the problems. Second item there is a reference to the River Grant application whereby we, uh, wanted to offer the program to provide funding relative to some groundwater management, we took a great effort at that and trying to address, um, much needed cover replacement. Unfortunately, it was looked at as more of a maintenance type issue, but we know that, uh, that's something that they will try to, um, secure in the future. And then last, uh, one of my responsibilities over the last twenty years has been overseeing the landfill. Um, up until the last few years, that's included groundwater monitoring and gas monitoring out there until the bomb reached the end of our twenty year permanent life cycle. And then since that time, uh, assuming it goes to perpetuity, is we have a responsibility to maintain the ground, uh, cover, natural cover, which is basically having to ensure that it's mowed four or five times a year and fertilizing and have help staying on. Looking back in twenty nineteen, and, um, we see categories here, some of our secondary road paving as well as the D O T projects, um, the only two that we have that were active, um, in planning. And was the Kingston Tanner Road, excuse me, last year we acquired the survey, I finished the design. Uh, that project is, uh, it's, it's moving into private review. There was also an additional road that had helped in first road, which is going to be, um, we've requested survey information, I just haven't arrived, it's just that, and that'll be coordinated within the context of the San Pedro Road project. Looking down through the trap talk and the last, um, little agency program active project, I'm going to say either active ones, uh, San Pedro Road project, um, it went through the permitting and we were able to finish construction in October, this last month. So they did well underway, actually done some of the widening, widening here already, and, uh, are beginning to work on some of the maintenance. The Northeast Ellison Road project, um, you know, there are some hurdles there that people aren't as well aware of with respect to some of the narrow right of ways on the south end. We are hoping to try to reach a resolution to either address those, um, in a proactive manner, or to address those in a manner which kind of makes it worth nothing. Hop Road, um, I actually sent in a agenda item for that yesterday, uh, thank you, Marshall. And that will be, uh, proposed to you, you'll review it on a next week's agenda item, and those bids will be received, um, in January of this year. Pine Crest Road as well, there's fully cut off road, uh, this will be received next Tuesday, that'll be, or that's when you will actually receive it. And then we're just moving into the last project, um, this, this week actually, the Green Tree sidewalk project, it goes from Marine Street out to Howard Street, this is a school entrance. That one is under construction now, uh, last project schedule I saw, the contractors anticipating summer neighborhood of sixty days, um, actual, um, commitment to completion, um, but they do have ninety days to finish that. The Old Dixie Highway, uh, sidewalk going from Jackson Street all the way down to Southside Park, that one's at a thirty percent stage, um, but we're looking for back to be, uh, recent completion next year. Looking at, um, next year, this, I guess this fiscal year and next year, um, I actually sent out the notices to the shortlisted engineering and P D I firm yesterday. We will begin negotiations with them once we receive their rate sheet, uh, plus many reviews and rank those, and I think you addressed them at your last meeting. The nine-one-one addressing and data management and distribution, like I referred earlier, that is literally an ongoing task, um, I don't know that we go by and I'm not, uh, feeding new information or correcting some that we know that's not correct, um, from how that data was originally constructed. The D P pipelines, uh, coordination on that is drawing to conclusion, I think, we are kind of finishing up there at Proppel Observatory, we've got some groundwater issues to address because of the route of the pipeline. And then once they, um, complete the, um, the path underneath Highway nineteen, they'll be moving over to, um, these paths to go under upper road. So that's going to be coming up in the next, uh, month or two. Danny alluded to the, um, F D I P project that is coming up, um, later this year, as well as the first of next year, and that's the dock replacements of the San Antonio program, that is both side ramps we have. Good sound, um, gangways and loading docks, uh, these will be the loading docks that are, um, out to the side, and we're going to be, uh, replacing the pipelines along with those, so that, as you noticed when, um, her being came through. You didn't really care that docks up as much as you literally picked them up, and they picked up high enough, it was a storm surge that they were able to pull off. Uh, what we will do is we will increase the elevation of specific these pipelines then, so that when you get these storm surge, uh, secondary storm surge, you will let them rise up and then turn around and go right back down to the same place. So it, it would be something less, um, that we have to deal with. From formal water management perspective, um, we will continue to do our United States introductions, I would provide, in some of the A N D P programs, I would provide that information through the emergency management. Um, we've also been in, had some additional contacts and discussions with, uh, the gentlemen that were kind of looking more macro wise in the San Antonio area from some of the recent, um, flooding to try to find solutions possibly, um, administrative officers have reached out to the Army Corps of Engineers. They have some programs that will help support, we think, um, kind of one of those areas that we can kind of use as a witness test, um, and then kind of, hopefully that would be the role model then, and be kind of leapfrogging to some of the other areas of the county. Kind of everything, when we have those high water areas, we know we have problem areas that are repeat offenders. We should be able to use that same type of contact and procedures then to address those areas with what I'm asking. And then the last thing is, uh, the location loading fertilizer contract, as I said, it was a responsibility that I think will go well beyond my tenure here. Uh, we did recently renew the contract, uh, for three years, so we don't have to worry about for a little. Looking at the road projects that are, um, coming up, we have a meeting scheduled for next week to address, um, right away issues with the Kingston Tanner Road. My hope is that we're able to get that issue resolved and be steady, ready for when we can move forward with these, um, Ellison Road projects that we can then include that within the overall scope and do two at the same time to kind of maximize our efficiency. And as I said, the, on the first road, I would expect in the day to receive the survey information, and once I receive that, I'll begin the design on that, sort of be convinced with that from contractor, and hopefully should change orders to include that within his scope. Moving back to the D O T projects, um, we will look to, um, complete these roads in this next calendar year, uh, that being the San Pedro. If we can do the Northeast Ellison Road right away and get that resolved by the end of this year, we will finish it next year. Hop Road, as I said, is, um, we should receive a bid in January and then turn right back around, we should have construction. Fully cut off and pine crest, I'd love to issue a, uh, note to receive those prior to the end of this year. Uh, Green Street sidewalk project will be done in the next few months, and then, I believe it's sometime around July, or August, in that timeframe, the Old Dixie Highway project, um, Elgin Howard sidewalk project is due to be completed. And then looking at the ones that we will be designing and surveying, uh, we have agreements for the gas plant road, both half of the water roads, excuse me, and Peter Island Road, and then, uh, First Avenue North will be right there on the field. And that was a lot and a little kind of close date, but if you have any questions at this time, I'll have to sit back and get up then.
Any questions from the board? I don't have any questions, but, oh, the Green Street sidewalk, they're coming along, it seems like very bad. Yeah, you said sixty days, uh, they, I don't know what else they have to do, but have you, have you looked at stuff?
Uh, actually, when we finish here, that is where I'm headed, I actually go through there and hit San Pedro and come back and finish that work first with that.
Yeah, they're moving along with that. One place that I had on that, I don't know, uh, if you know the answer or not, you probably do, um, the, the old existing sidewalk, it comes from, um, the town, down the, what are we, the?
It goes to arena.
Yeah. How, how long is that?
Fifty percent.
Fifty? Okay.
City care will actually own, perhaps name and responsibility for portion of this. Um, we've fully had a minimum of a green or maintenance agreement because D O Ts request with that, I think, that, and Chairman Stan is coordinating that with Mr. Brown, um, that we will have a part of the raw file pressure first before we get to completion. And that's fine, it's the maintenance responsibility for city portions of the sidewalk and then the responsible for the construction.
I was looking at that coming here this morning, and I noticed how much the new sidewalk are going to look, and then the other existing sidewalk, a lot of grass and fallen over designs, and I just didn't know if that was our responsibility to, to get them clean.
No, this project is federal funded, um, we have to go back, they, I tried to keep from doing it as long as I could, but ultimately I have to get that certified, which then opens the county up to federal funded projects. Um, Green Tree is actually the first one that we've, um, participated with, with the D O Ts. That allows us to oversee, so I have to review everything, I will actually authorize, um, payments, we set up a cost center, but then all of that one, we have to reverse back to us. So this, this is the first one, Old Dixie Highway is the next one, and then I'm expecting once we get past these two, then they're going to, this, and D O Ts going to assign the responsibility completely to us, where it comes up with project management. We will be responsible for all of the dynamic construction.
But Ken, I know you're, right now, a one man department, uh, you're doing a fantastic job, I really appreciate what you're doing, and I'm really impressed by the style of the hospital, that was very good on your part.
Why, why, I'm gonna.
Thank you. Information technology, actually, creative company.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Uh, I think it's a little backwards. Building technology, interest charge, networking computer I T services. We give the elements, the hardware, software, and network, and the services that this department, um, works with other county employees and vendors. The computing server data protection, the data protection is to save our information for the D I S on the server, the building and planning, um, documents that they need to serve us to pull. Uh, keeping the server A D A compliant, because that's the thing now, we're often, we have to make sure that the website is A D A compliant. So, the duties of director of technology. yearly voting, when they have that, or being the primary question, like that. Directively supporting the implementation of new software and hardware for all county departments. Managing all county communication building will include the validated services, um, reliable, just on cell phones, and the sun sign on call eight-one-one. Maintaining all purchases for electronics will include computers, printers, software, hardware for all departments. Coordinating I T activities to ensure data availability and network services will be available. Identifying active opportunities to improve and update network systems, assisting and training with department head. Maintaining county access and inventory for all county departments. So, when it comes to inventory, I do inventory for the entire town. County auctions, go tire, but plus vehicles. Maintaining renewal of agreements, creating and maintaining the county website, allocating prices and prices and services to multiple vendors. My note for twenty twenty is to update the new, to a new server and the software to maintain the server. Cause right now we have a proficient server, but with D I S, the engineering department constantly blowing, these will be a server to, you know, this house is low. I want to do a live size maintenance of the right C computers and software to definitely replace all the old computers to adapt to new software that will be a cost management for the new system pulling out. Twenty twenty, the Windows seven will be absolutely, so, yeah, everything is going to be okay. Continuing the A D A compliant monitoring, we want to have, or we're looking at a new system here for this building, some good stuff, and for the top of library itself, so we can start getting that.
You got plenty of fluid on.
Yeah. Continuing maintenance on devices, so it's them like bringing in for some order to cut off it. We have, um, broadening, involving every town's department to cut the prices or reduce the internet calls and telephone calls for all departments. And I'm working with vendors to ensure the department receives embedded prices for software, hardware, computers, office copies, and print.
You have one more on your heart.
You did a good job, thank you. Thank you.
Part of the park, yes, so.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Alrighty, alright, our first slide kind of gives you a representation of how big our department is, it seems like we're not that big, but we really are. Um, so directly underneath me, we have our part-time on-call fire inspector, um, underneath that we have three mechanics on membership. Um, you can see we have, seven station April, we actually have seven fire stations, um, the station five used to be the tenant station, that was shut down years ago, and we just saved the number in case they bring it in in the future. Um, the station one has operated on three shifts and has two on-call fire cutters. Station two is a volunteer staff station, station three is a volunteer staff station, on the station four. Station six, we're going to be moving to a twenty-four hour three, three hit station this year, thanks to the four, getting that position. Um, station seven is a three shift, twenty-four hour eight staff station, and station eight is a volunteer staff station.
Station six.
Yeah.
Where's that?
Keep.
Station seven?
Yeah.
Station eight?
Okay, go ahead.
It's not with the first one, it's helped a lot.
No, 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 no. Station one is at the airport, station two is the one on the cam and addicts off those three, station three is on Johnson trip one. Station four is deconvene, station six is keep least, station seven is deconvene, and station eight is keeper.
Hey, and don't let some report boxes of fire numbers, Matt, maybe, huh? So we did give you an illustration of the service headquarters for, the dent service headquarters, we do those fire stations. They're a little large.
What do you have, I guess, behind you now? What do you, what do you have?
That's station two.
Station two.
Uh, break over view, fire rescue in all hazards, response agency charged, always providing fire suppression of structure fire, debris fire, fresh fire, along with response motor vehicle action, hazardous material events, medical incidents, natural disasters, and more. And we are probably the only department in the county that you don't want to be. And we are probably the only department in the county that you don't want to be busy, just saying, that you don't want to be busy.
Yeah.
Um, as of September first, we fire rescue has gone into three hundred and twenty emergency calls, um, currently that's well over four hundred per day. Uh, of those, twenty-four have been brush fires, eighteen have structural fires, fifteen were vehicle fires, forty-seven fire alarms and investigations for smoke or gas, fifty-seven vehicle accidents, no fires involved, hundred and eighty medical response, and forty-one for hazardous material, technical services, or different things, and we're hopeful. Um, and when you see these numbers, kinda shows, okay, that sounds like we're wrong, but it, what it doesn't show is, a lot of people say, well, what do firefighters do when they're not signing on call? And I know there's so much downtime, but in reality, what they're always constantly dealing with their firefighters, is they're preparing for the next call. They're making sure the equipment is top notch, ready to go, that if they need it in a moment's notice, it's always gonna work for them. Um, the biggest thing they're always doing is training, they're always, we're always keeping up to date on our tactics, um, what's current, what's new. Um, we've seen since I started my career, the materials that are being, being used in fires is completely different from when I started. So a house fire, it used to take quite some long to burn entirely, means then burn the top, new materials are made with plastics and synthetic and glue, and where it's getting double, triple, quadruple is the B C U loads, those fires are a lot harder than we used to, and they expand a lot faster. So that's why we're constantly looking to where, where we're going, and we go back after another one of these calls, and we critique ourselves internally, and we say, what do we do, how can we be done better? What, what can be done for the next one? Um, cause in our industry, I've, I've stood here before, and I've told you moments and minutes matter, and in that kinda situation, we don't really get the option to be wrong. So we go back and we make sure that, well, we're there, and every decision is the right one, because we may not get that next moment, or that next minute, to make the right decision. So that's what we do when we're out there calling calls. Uh, quick breakdown for the district, where do you need this, and what they are again? Um, district two, this is again, as, as, had sixty-two calls in there this, and had district, district three with sixty-four calls, district four only had four, district six was, was that fifty calls, district seven was one hundred and twenty-three, district eight sixteen, and we provided eleven calls for mutual aid to state parents. Um, and in that time, the district sign, stick numbers have come up pretty drastically, and that's been a steady, a steady thing, we're getting more and more of that people we need to take. And I think that's kinda indicative of the fact that it is a state that, they have a turn, and people need to take this, a lot more people see us there, and they're quicker to call on anyone, because they know that we're in a state over there, and it's not gonna take so long, so they're, they're big agents, which is a good thing. Um, the only other thing I'd like to add, that's not on the slide, is like the last few weeks, we had a meeting with the city, we had a fire inspector, had a part-time transfer one, or part-time firefighter, new to that one. Um, today, we've done forty-five new inspections and fifteen rain inspections, um, and when we first hired him, I mean, there was a delay, it took a rebuild of our inspection process, we wanted to start cleaning, it's something that was, that was gonna be real nice for us to go into. Um, and we're looking at the total business of what, what he's been in this, makes, often dependent businesses every year, that we need to do fire inspection for. So, you know, as we progress, we see how we're doing with the part-time inspector, and I guess, when we did that, we said we might be going to a full-time in the future, but we wanna keep evaluating on-call positions, and how quickly we can set up. But it's going really well, um, most of the, the things that we're seeing are, they don't have fire extinguishers, or they're outdated, or their system, their, outdated, or lack of equipment. A lot of small things that get overlooked, and that's why we do, we do the fire inspections, so we can catch the minimum, and say, you can't do this, and that's how we prevent these fires, so it's going really well.
Is that a family department?
We do our best.
You sure do, thank you, I really appreciate it. From all your smart owners, and all the much, we appreciate it. Your body don't hurt, just scary, my voice.
Captain.
Hi.
Hi.
First, uh, slide is the flow chart, showing the district, and it has a six departments over here. Uh.
Do you want me to draw them?
Yeah, Helen's gonna come up, do animal control, I'm sorry. She volunteered.
No, I was volunteering.
That's where you can say for the department.
Um, I do that, I'm working that, I don't know, um, animal control is basically like my baby, uh, one that's close to me, so, um, I'm gonna tell you what we've done this year. Um, we have established a new procedure to reserve animals for adoption before it's actually available, while some strangles, uh, previously, it was a first come, first served, which led to some arguments in our cracking law, it led to my staff being, uh, not, not very likely. Uh, this new procedure allows my staff to take information on the potential owner, uh, on the potential adopter, um, they now have a collar marking system, where that animal will be marked with a collar, and also in our computer database, there's a spot to put in a reservation for that animal, so that if anybody else is interested, we can let them know that we do have basically a line on that animal, so it is available. Um, I was able to work with one of my officers and set up our new database, um, so it automatically updates our webpage now with our available animals, and we don't, we did have a Facebook page, it was very hard, staff lines to keep that current, um, the database, so we now updates itself every night, and will show in new citizens interested, what we currently have in the shelter for adoption. Um, that was a very nice time saver as well. Um, and then we had continued success in bringing down, um, the rate of animals that are utilized in our shelter, as well as the amount of our intake in our shelter. Duties of animal control, public safety, citizen complaints, aggressive animals, injured animals, law enforcement requests for service, the care and well-being of the animals that are at our shelter, and public education on how to better care for their animals. Um, as I looked at our, um, at our slides, I realized that none of the numbers are on our statistics, on our charts, so I'm a numbers person, I like to see percentages and, and totals, so, um, I wanted to share, our lease rate in two thousand and eighteen was seventy-one percent, with the euthanization rate of twenty-six percent. Uh, this year, our live release was eighty-one percent, with the use rate of eighteen, so we have gone down in that. Um, ten years ago, when I came to Taylor County, I started as a volunteer at the shelter, so I looked at the numbers in the ten years that I've been in relationship with animal control as a whole, um, our live release rate in two thousand and nine was twenty-two percent, which last year it was eighty-one percent, live, live release. Uh, euthanization of animals was seventy-four percent when I came in, and it's eighteen percent now. So I just wanted you to be able to see how it really has declined, uh, euthanization wise. Um, assisting citizens in two thousand and nineteen, our animal control calls, obviously the pie chart doesn't mean a whole lot to everybody, it is a hundred and thirty-one after-hours calls, it is one thousand twenty-nine informational calls, a hundred and two lost and found calls, and two thousand two hundred and sixty calls which required my officers to respond. Um, same lines, we have two local rescue partners that are helping us move our animals from our shelter into rescues when the shelter's full, when there's no interest in adopting, um, they have helped us get out nine hundred and ninety-one animals moved to rescue organizations throughout the state in nineteen, in, in the year of two thousand and nineteen, so almost a thousand animals out to rescue, which is amazing. Um, our goals for twenty twenty are to replace our handicap ramp, replace our drain system in the kennels, set up a concrete pad and walkway to our outside kennels, um, continue to decrease the euthanization rate, increase communication and relationships with rescues and the rescue partners, increase the adoption rate, implement new gate system and parking area, and institute a GPS system on trucks for officer safety, cost efficiency, and climate protection.
I have a personal question.
Yes, sir.
Our wife is a cat lover, and she hates, made her get rid of a cat. What you do is a housewife, and they get you a cat.
You slowly bring them one by one, and we bring them to rescue? You, you love your wife, and you love your cat, so you're just a puppy.
And then tighten them, sort of, and step.
Oh.
If they're hungry, good. I, so bring them till you took free of time.
We didn't do that, we didn't do them in the rescue.
Beautiful cat, well fed, she's been before playing on cats, who's not even counting.
You know, my, my mom's existence of the, if he ever came back after he passed away, he wanted to come back as one of her dogs, so, they were treated better than everybody else.
You can't, you haven't been.
I want to tell you that your numbers and statistics are impressive. I, make these films when I see that, I, I like that, that was good, thank you, thank you.
Good job. Uh, this slide here is showing the recycled hazardous waste, that's the belt of cardboard that we do now, and that's showing just a bunch of it that's fixed to the apartment. Uh, three years.
Recycled?
Yes. Two thousand and nineteen, we recycle, and we collected thirty-three thousand one hundred and eleven dollars seventy cents, due for recycling, metal cardboard, plastic newspaper, uh, ashore, volcanoes, we do paint, light bulbs, chemicals, we do a lot of that hazardous waste, uh, collecting recyclable material disposal, or recycled gold for two thousand and twenty, we're trying to get a GPS system and cost efficiency, but we're also gonna try to educate the, you know, the public, world war two, with that, that's been a ongoing challenge, but we're working on that. And the following way, uh, last year, you guys ditched two brand-new trucks, and that was, uh, I appreciate that, that was a big relief off of us, it really was. I don't think you guys have a clue how much that helped us, it was a lot. We built a new building, it's, uh, Harrison Blue, and Harrison, we got this yesterday, here's a picture, that's what I couldn't get, did you? That's a million that they done, that, how many did that?
That's really good.
Kenneth and him come out, did a lot of work, Hank and his crew, really, really did do a good job. Uh, new compacted uncover, blue springs side, that's really, was a desperate need, and it's a, a big asset down there. Uh, C and B last year, and half will track. We hold one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven loads in the off sale, six thousand four hundred and seventy-four, four seventy-five tons. Vegetation debris after the burn side, uh, three hundred and twenty loads, fourteen hundred and forty tons roughly, and tires, there were probably twenty to thirty yard containers, we did thirty-seven loads out to the recyclable, when they pick up. Uh, goals for two thousand and twenty, uh, hopefully we get two more leash trucks, chain link fence for Shady Grove and Renard Johnson side, ten new roll-off containers, two compacted ones for Shady Grove and Longton Colson side, new concrete slab and shelter for Shady Grove side. Uh, first one, do you?
Hello, ma'am. I'm Greg Mullins, I'm sports complex coordinator, um, and on this first slide, is I need batting cages, and I think you guys approved with the help of Ms. Valonda, I'm getting money for this, this batting cage, Ms. Valonda, Mr. Gary asked me what I needed, like when I was hired a year ago, to bring more tournaments and more people into our community, and the first thing I, I mentioned to them was, for that complex, we needed more batting cages, well, we needed some batting cages, because I've had groups out there that wanted to look at our ability to have sporting events out there, and they have criteria, that they have to have, they'll bring people in. So this batting cage, just this one so far, I met with a company called U triple S A, it's the second largest, um, kid organization for, for sporting events, and we secured, partnered with them last week, four days to come to Taylor County, um, that's gonna bring thousands of people to our community, starting in March, we're gonna have one in March, one in April, one in May, and one in June, at the sports complex. So just this one new building that Daniel Quinn and his crew did, the concrete for us, um, is gonna bring thousands of people into the county in the near future. Uh, the next slide is, um, some privacy wind screens, and that's to help, um, to wind south the kids, when a parent pulls up the lighting for safety reasons, so that their lights and their cars in the parking lots don't bother anybody. We also put up a new privacy fence for the local, um, neighbors, so they get more privacy when the lights are on, um, so kids aren't going to go to their fence and bother their animals. And the one on the right is, that was a fence that we had completely repaired, the hurricane tore it down, so myself and the M A crew had to reattach that fence all the way back up, and put the new ring tree on there. That was a big job for the, uh, for my crew out there, my five-man crew. Um, the walking path, the bridge that's up there right now, we had to completely reconstruct that, um, it had rotten completely away, so we're becoming a hazard to our walkers and our walking track out there, we have a track, a mile long track out there at the complex, so we had to re, completely reconstruct that, we need to do a couple more that are, that are starting to deteriorate a little bit, but that was a, a week-long job of me and five, five grown men, um, working hard at it, and, and, and we appreciate that contribution too, because that was a, um, was a complete safety hazard for our, for our walkers out there. These are the portable mounds that were also on the list for the U triple S A requirement to be able to come here and participate in baseball and softball events, so with, with your help and your approval of Ms. Valonda coming and asking for it, we were able to buy three portable mounds, it's a very expensive, but it allowed for quick maneuvers to allow younger kids or older kids to play on that same particular field, so we can bring more teams in and more age groups in, which brings in more family spending money in our community. Uh, our goals for two thousand and twen, two thousand and twenty, um, we've already looked into the grants, new grants to build more cages at the field, we need more cages at the complex, that's one of those that we have, to bring in larger groups, perfect game and those kind of corporations, so where we could possibly have tens of thousands of people coming in to carry, or a week-long event, baseball, softball, soccer, things of that nature. Um, we need a few more lawn orders, uh, we're down to two, and we have a eighty-six acre place to maintain, and we probably, I'm not sure of this number, but we are probably the most visited place in the county, so we really have to maintain that, we really want it to look nice for the people that come and walk, or the, the parents, the grandparents that come with their kids, or grandkids to play sporting events, so we need a little more equipment, we have enough to keep up now, because it's the dead period, and things are not growing, but maybe beginning of the growing season, we'll have to look into that a little bit more. Um, we need security lights on our walking trails, um, because we don't shut the gates until ten P M., and that's per the county guidelines imposed, and folks are out there walking, you know, we have a lot of working people that come out there after hours, and with the daylight savings time, it gets dark at five-thirty now, and some folks can't get back into town, and they still wanna exercise, um, so we have a lot of people out there exercising, and now that it's getting dark, we see people with headlights on their hat, and, um, I think that's a big thing that we need to address, just for the safety of our, our community, and to keep more people coming out there, even when it's, some folks like somebody went and pulled off, and, and there's not a big group of people, um, and I think we need to really look at that. And we have a few more wood bridges that we need to rebuild, there's a few deteriorating that have been turned over, and the office that we use to, that's my office, the building, and we also use it for our voting precinct, the porch, the platform that they walk up is, is deteriorating rapidly, so we need to look and, and address that issue as well. Um, that's all I have, you guys got any questions for me?
No questions, but we, we never look so good.
I'm out there a lot and I hear other people, it's always the small events are cleaned out, it's, no, it looks very, very good. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, appreciate it.
Now that I'm satisfied with presented our success case in our vision, I would like to take just a minute, um, for doing all of that. I would like to thank the board for your leadership, the county attorney for his wisdom and agents of state, and to our constitutional officers and the staff, um, the King of Commerce, the C P D A and the City Attorney. I am grateful for the partnership that we have with every organization. I'm also thankful for our citizens and volunteers, they are our eyes and our ears in the community. Not only do they provide watchful eyes over all of Taylor County, they also provide a source of knowledge and experience to all of us. There are so many departments and employees to thank. I feel that our employees are among the most dedicated workforce anywhere. And the successes we have achieved in Taylor County is partially due to their commitment and their leadership. Because of the combined efforts, I can say that the state of Taylor County is strong and working together, we can make it stronger for our community. And thank you for this.
Thank you.
I wanna just, just want, I wanna thank you for your leadership. The past year has been one of the easiest years and sometimes for this one, God thinks that I've been here and signed you. So, I appreciate that leadership. I appreciate all you department heads and others who've come out. Your employees are doing a great, fantastic job. You're dedicated, I appreciate each one of you. Um, and your service to us, um, really, really appreciate your job, the effort and, and you did a great job on these presentations too, though. And I look forward to next year and the next year, C and B again, this is good. And you know, not only do we get to know more about exactly what you're doing, but putting that space with that name is, to me, is, is incredible. So, I really appreciate all of y'all and, um, appreciate the board, our attorney. Anybody else?
I appreciate the continued hesitation that we get and what you're doing for your employees and for you camp leaders and the making of camp leaders, so, when you see one of the jobs, you know what you do.
I'll echo, just, Sheriff ladies, comments. Appreciate all the hard work that all of you do. Some of you I don't think I, I know, uh, most of me I do, but I, again, I appreciate all the service you do, the board and our citizens. You all, all work much. About what we hear on, on the streets and that. See five guys out here in one dump truck standing around, not doing anything. They're safe. You gotta help them out with the safety group. And, uh, which is, again, we just appreciate.
And I wanna say, uh, thanks to the sheriff's department for always having somebody here to protect all of us. And I do wanna recognize the, uh, city manager, Pam, uh, Graham, it's not so happy here. Come back and see us. Anybody else? Is there a lunch to attend?
Keep making lunch in the workshop.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm gonna go home.
Well, they can't go home.